Hi, everybody. I know it's noon. I'd like to just wait for one more minute and see if any other members of council log on. Right now, it's just me and Mr. Royble. So we'll just wait one more minute, and if not, no one else joins, we'll get started. I know that this is being recorded, and so Jen McClellan can put it in the cloud for a period of time so that other council members can view it. So I appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to the November 5th, 2021 work session. Today's subject is the American Rescue Plan Infrastructure, Water, Sewer, and Broadband Projects. This meeting is open to the public. However, no public comment will be taken. And this is also the Border War Edition work session. So anybody online that went to CSU, sorry. We have been joined by Dr. Aldridge and Mr. Cook. And I think Dr. Rennie and Mr. Johnson will be logging on shortly. So with that, I'll turn it over to Renee. Renee, please proceed.
All right. Thank you so much. I apologize for my technical difficulties last week. I think it was just that sort of a week. So here we are again. So I just wanted to draw your attention for just a minute. I bring this slide up every week. There are some changes this week. The numbers, the big pot of money stays the same. However, there were some things that that grant management software that we had purchased, we didn't have this on here. I had included, you know, the homeless housing project. I had taken that off of the sum over in the the Public Health Economic Impact. I ended up putting that total, that 4,402,211 back on. Because when it comes time for you all to make your decisions and work on what projects you want to fund, that's going to be included in that. So I wanted you to have the total pot of money at your disposal when you're thinking through. So I just just brief update. This did change. If you're comparing it to last week, there are some differences. The agenda today, we've got Mr. Cobb, City Engineer, Charles Bloom with Planning and Development, and we've got the Board of Public Utilities presenting. So I will try to move quickly, but I did want to bring a couple of things to your attention. After last week, we, with the questions that were asked, it really made us think a little bit more about the the information we're collecting on these projects. So we did kind of go back to the drawing board with our technology requests. We created a shared file. Everybody's been putting information in so that you can see what the one-time cost is, what it's going to cost every year, so that at the end of this grant period, you'll have a better idea of what the the long-term budget would be for the city. So we're working on finalizing all of that. Almost everybody has input their information. But I think that will be more helpful to you as you make your decisions. The other thing talking about, and I'm hoping Charles will talk or Tom will talk about this a little bit today. Some of the technology programs to run businesses have modules. Compliances could be cross-departmental. So I think at some point after this, it's going to be a sit down at the table and go, okay, here's what we found. Here's what we found. Here's what works for everybody. So that's still in the works, and I have been collecting all the supporting documents, all the quotes everyone has received. So when we're wrapping up after next week, I will make sure you all have access to all of that information just to help you kind of formulate some decisions. Mayor Collins brought to my attention that there is some new legislation going on right now about these American Rescue Plan funds. It's not issuing any additional dollars. They're trying to make it a little bit easier to have us spend these dollars in a way that works better for our government. And I have a one-page sheet for that for you. Just very briefly, it wants to add the amount, up to 30% of our total American Rescue Plan money could be used for new infrastructure, transportation. They really kind of broadened how we can use that money and not necessarily just have to rely on the formula that Robin spent so much hard work to create so that we knew what our revenue recovery was. They're sort of changing that. It's at the House right now. So I'm just tracking it, checking and seeing where it's at and how it changes. Because it would change the county and how they spend theirs as well. I will just give you updates as I get them, but I just wanted to make you aware. But I will send that one page to you all, and there's a link with more information that you can kind of follow on. I did want to let you know that Robin and I have been working on sort of a tally sheet to evaluate what we're doing and all of these projects. There's, you know, 60 of them. And it's a little challenging. So once we wrap up next week, or depending on what Mayor Collins or Mr. White you would prefer, I can send it to you so you can kind of start having in mind what you're wanting to do. It's just a simple ranking system of a zero for nope, not I'm not doing it, to a five, we really need to fund it. Very simple. It's ready to go whenever you all are ready. I just didn't know if you wanted to wait until you saw the final presentation next week. Just as another clarification for people who weren't, who haven't gotten the information, we are bumping up. We're not going to do the December 10th. The opening next Friday opens, so we're jumping on it. And that will be our final American Rescue Plan presentation next week. So I'm kind of looking forward to having it all in one house and sending it out to you, and you guys take it from there. Just as a reminder, I'm not going to read this whole thing, but your eligible uses, keep in mind, was this need identified because of COVID? Was this a system in the city that we could improve? Does this benefit our neighbors? So just keep that in mind when you're making your decisions. And again, if you need any other information, just reach out to me and let me know. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Tom. He has his own slides that he is going to present on, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen and let Tom pick it up.
You can leave that one, Renee, for the moment if you want, because I didn't.
Really?
Yep, just.
Okay. Sorry, Tom.
That's all right.
Before before Mr. Cobb gets started, Renee, if you could email that one-page sheet to Jen, or I believe you could probably email it to all city council members. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
I'll do that right now. Okay, Tom, hang on one second. I gotta share again. Gonna find it.
I was just going to use that first cover sheet. I should have just left it in line.
There you go, Tom.
President White, members of the council, I appreciate the the time today. I know you all are very busy and have heard many different projects. I tried to synthesize this down into two projects that I felt were something that I that I have not been able to fund. The first is the Right-Away Management Citizen Engagement and Work Order Tracking Software. And I did include all of my costs before the question is asked. I ran for the course of the funding through, this would include annual fees, implementation, and software costs. So just to be clear, all those costs were included in line. The second one that I came up with was the Pump House Wetland Area, which is a very important stormwater component, but but more but more importantly, from this aspect, I was looking at a project that we have the possibility to increase the quality of life in these low to moderate income areas, and it's really underserved, and it needs to be opened up. So this, these are safety improvements and public access improvements as well as some maintenance upgrades. So I'll go into the detail. Sorry about that, Renee, that I confused you. I'll try to share my screen.
Any questions or comments for members of council?
I'm sorry, President White, I've got some detail here if I can open up my screen.
Oh, my apologies, Mr. Cobb. Sorry.
I'm just a little slow with my technology today. Okay. All right.
There you go.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're exactly seeing. Hopefully, it is the slide I'm looking for. The first item was the Right-Away Management and Citizen Engagement and the Work Order Tracking Software. So from this standpoint, this is three components, actually four. So the first one is the Public Works Package, and this is more that would be geared towards street alley and our storm. And what the idea is, we can then, Vicky and I will be able to match up together with my maintenance projects and what she's going on. And we don't have to rely on what we'll say is knowledge that is carried on from person to person. We have a lot of a lot of paperwork generated, but to be able to condense this in a fashion that's, we can log and track it. So it generates and tracks work orders so that we can use the computer, the tablet, a mobile device. It tracks who the employee was, the equipment that was used, the inventory, the parts, the materials used. It tracks and manages the work location. There's a GPS attached to that, obviously, when you have your tablet or mobile device. And then we can also look at putting maintenance schedules and history in. And again, it's just going to be a better way for us to manage our assets together as far as right-of-way management. And then the second component, what I called right-of-way management directly, is really data collection and that management combined. So with what it uses, and you can see on the right, there's an there's an image here of just a typical street. So it uses high-res imagery and GPS data to collect all the signs, all the trees, the sidewalks, the luminaires, the signals, the curb and gutter, the pavement markings and more. And then what we can do then is track condition and manage work locations in maintenance history where Vicky and I overlap each other. So a very, a very good way to keep us organized and and be very stewards of taxpayers' funds. The map on the right or below is kind of what what would be laid out. Again, there's a is a is a layout section, and then also this imagery that they collect, and we can use both. The third component is the stormwater ingrating. So we actually would be able to manage our stormwater pollution plans and our grading permits. And folks could then apply online with their grading permits using this app. We can create and track work orders related to that as well. So from that standpoint, the last one is the Citizen Engagement Component. And this one I thought was very good because right now we have both on from my side, it's Lorraine, and from Vicky's side is Monet. There's an interlog of these inundated phone calls that we have to really log by paper. And this engagement request would use a web portal and also a TextMyGov app that they could download. So then we could assist to discover and track problems like potholes, sign issues, overgrown vegetation. So even compliance could use this. And as again, that crossover that we talked about. And there are modules that we could add to this to do more and more. And again, last but not least, we have ADA or sidewalk issues could also be tracked. And again, that that creates a citizen complaint log, and we also could use it for internal staff. And those can be, they're very, they're very, what am I trying to say? You could, the the app is very easy to use, and it can track different of who's doing it. So there would be a generated report differently by city staff and also by a citizen. So this mobile app is then could be used to our our website. So you can upload photos. And again, the GPS location can be uploaded by the citizen. It doesn't track it unless it wants them to, because obviously for privacy issues. But I think it's a very good tool to be able to identify exactly where these problems are. And again, as I stated, it links to the City of Shine website. And again, seamless access to manage those items in the right-of-way like storm and public works together. So all these requests that are then submitted, and then we can have, it can be customizable. Well, emails can be sent automatically to either the department head or a staff member that needs to directly deal with it. And that way, it doesn't get lost in the paperwork, and I think it's a heck of a lot more efficient than the way we're doing it now. You know, it's a phone call, and then a work order has to be generated. So all this can be done seamlessly. So those requests can then, like I said, can be can be exported or automatically created to a work order or a case number. So the last project that I talked about is the Pump House Wetlands. And again, I feel this one's, it's just been sitting so long that maintenance needs to be done on this, and we just don't have the funds to do it. And for, to be quite frank, there's some serious safety issues that we need to address before it's open. This project obviously occurred before my time, but I need to get this thing opened and maintenance done. So that's why I came with you with this one. From the maintenance standpoint, if you look at the top sort of an overall aerial, there's a concrete diversion structure, and I don't know if you can see my cursor. It's it's right in the lower right between the blue here. Do you see where I'm pointing? Okay, this structure then, okay, this structure right now, and I, for some reason, they did not design an aluminum head gate to go on this. So I really can't prevent flow from getting into this forbay here. So what's happened now, this is full of sediment, and we can't get it cleaned out. So what I would do then is to install aluminum gate installation on this structure and so that we could dredge this, what we call the forbay, and then the main part of the wetland area here. So this all now is full of silt and sediment because it's been overcharged. So it needs to be cleaned out. And then also, we do, this is the micro pool area. We do all three of these at one time. And then we really need to look at the wetland plant assessment, because now some of these plants have been over-innated with moisture, and to be honest, some sediment issues that we may have problems. We have to look at what plants need to be replaced and how we can do that. So that would be a separate project. The second part of this is the public access and safety upgrades. So overall, the site, this is a, this this photo was taken in right after I I became City Engineer. I had it done. And so it's it's a little bit delayed, and I just was out there just a last month, and the site really just needs to be cleaned up. There are some, we need some safety lighting installed. We have a lot of a lot of homeless people that are trying to get in this area, as we know from the pump house itself. They get in here. It's just, it's really not safe. There's, we need to light it. We have guardrails that are, we have now that are not installed. We have drop-offs that are greater than 30 inches. All that needs to be upgraded so that we have protection for the public. We need to install Greenway chain link and decorative net perimeter fencing to clean this up, make it look nice. And then last but not least, and I guess I've got three more, but as part of that structure, you can see the little, I've drawn here a little riprap area. What's happened now is this area here is now filled in with sediment. It completely collapsed. They used two, two, two steep slopes. And so it fell into the to the actual forbay area. So I need to construct a wall here and rebuild this. It should have been done from the beginning. And then site amenities, we had looked at putting some benches in, some waste and animal waste refuge, and then also a bike rack, just to kind of bring it up to speed to where we're supposed to be. And then some path signage to talk about now that we don't have the extension as we'd like someday, going towards 15th Street, but direct them in what direction to be able to go. And then, of course, pave and surface the parking lot and the access drive, just like what we require from any developer. So that's about all I have. I only wanted to take a few minutes. I certainly appreciate your time, and I'd like to field any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Any comments or questions I'm seeing?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Scott, we're going to go to you, then we're going to go to Dr. Aldridge, and then then we'll go to Pete, and then Richard. So Scott, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cobb, you were talking about in the the first, the first ask, that Vicky and you would be sharing this software. Are we going to need to get the Right-Away Management Software? Are we going to need to get her a separate subscription or separate modules? And will that, or is this one thing that'll take care of the whole city?
President White, through you to Councilman Royble. Sir, this, Vicky, and this would not require additional licensing, but again, more elements can be purchased. I did not look at all the compliance elements. I did, but Vicky and I coordinated together, so this includes both of us together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royble. Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, President White, through you too. Mr. Cobb, I'm just curious, Tom, if you can, I've got two questions. The first is, with this software, do you have the hardware to operate the software currently? The iPads or the devices you were talking about, or is that included in this quote?
President White, through you to Dr. Aldridge, the answer to this is you can use any mobile device, so any phone works. So right now, all of the public work staff, I believe, have, at least the crews have tablets, to what I understand. We we are already equipped with full tablets. But you, again, you can use your mobile device. So it did not, I did not include, I guess to answer your question directly, we did not include those as part of this this ask.
Okay, um, I, and so my second question is, is we have been talking about software recurring costs. I know you said you built that in for the life of this funding. But what does the annual price look like after this funding goes away?
President White, through you to Dr. Aldridge, ma'am, they, this can be, it depends on the amount. So and how many times a year, for instance, as I talked about before, if I looked at, looking at assessment on a yearly basis, right now, this was done every year. I went ahead and put it in for every year of the cycle. So in other words, when I look at signs, trees, sidewalks, luminaires, signals, pavement markings, you know, we could choose that interval. So up to up to about $20,000 is what, that's the total max. And again, that can be, it can be customized as we move forward. And I think for something like this, an assessment would probably need to occur for at least with that about every every four years.
So I just want to make sure that I asked the question that I think you're answering. So you're saying that once this funding has gone away, and if we want to continue to use this program, we would be looking at an ongoing cost each year of about $20,000 for this software system that would do all of the right-of-way management, citizen engagement, and work order tracking.
President White, through you to Dr. Aldridge. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I, sorry, I had one more question, Chairman White.
Go ahead.
My last question is, is there any plan in looking at the wetland map that you showed, is there a plan to somehow ever connect this into our Greenway system? I'm seeing the white line. I'm guessing that's concrete in the diagram that's on the right, the picture that's above the diagram. Is there any plan to connect that into the Greenway system or into the Reed Corridor?
President White, through you to Dr. Aldridge, yes, ma'am, you can see on this, on the lower one here, it says future concrete pathway. So in the interim connection, we'd be looking at the street connection just to the north on Schneider, which you can see where my cursor is. That's the interim, and then the long term would be going out to the east and connecting into 15. But obviously, that's a very long-term solution. But interim, like I say, is the Snyder Connection, which we're working on with the Reed Avenue Corridor project.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. Mr. Laborn.
Thank you, Jeff. I would have to say that I am very concerned about what I've just heard in regard to that interim exit there onto Snyder and its connection to the Reed Avenue Corridor. I think that the Greenway Coordinator is on this call. And certainly, when we look at that connection, there has been discussion with the property owner immediately to the north and the east coming up to Lincoln Way in terms of really connecting the path system properly. So considering that we're going to have some time here to evaluate that, I think we really need to do this right. That obviously was the problem here in the construction and the fact that it's sat vacant all this time. But the connection of the Greenway system is not a connection to sidewalks and busy streets. It is a connection to a safe 10-foot-wide pathway that was obviously conceived of here at that endpoint you see with the box. So I just wanted to make that point. It's, this, this very much ties into the 15th Street project that we approved, very much ties into the eventual rehabilitation of the pump house. So my suggestion is that we keep this in mind, work with the Greenway Coordinator and that property owner, and see what we can do, not necessarily in terms of this funding mechanism, but with a with the other funding mechanisms we have for the Greenway system. Because this is really can be a wonderful surprise for the Greenway users and the people in the neighborhood. And I'd also point out that that piece that we just did along Crow Creek up to Lincoln Way from the Ames Avenue Underpass very much brings that major junction together. So I just wanted to make that point that I think it's time we stop thinking of this project in long term since we're going to be doing this kind of an effort. And I I believe that this kind of an effort is indicated by our correspondence with the Department of Environmental Quality and our responsibilities in the original construction. So let's, let's take the proper approach here, not not running it up to Snyder and calling it good. This is not a big stretch from that end of that concrete up to 15th, up to Lincoln Way, and then around to 15th Street. We're, I'm a member of a subcommittee of the Greenway Committee. That is, we're going to be over there today, as a matter of fact, evaluating how we can put this all together in in the proper manner of our total Greenway system, which is safe and separated. So thank you, and I'll look forward to continuing this discussion later.
Thank you, Mr. Laborn. Mr. Johnson.
Okay, just kind of to follow up what Pete said. So since the Sixpenny actually passed on O and M and expansion of the Greenway this week, and this is mostly ARP call, are we looking, like Pete said, to use those funds that were actually approved? I know they start in April, but to try to get monies from them instead of using the ARP money? The other idea I thought in regards to the DEQ and the plants and everything, are we using our current resources with, like, say, the botanical gardens to see if we could get, you know, ahead of the game on a certain type of plants that we can use to repopulate that area? So I just want to make sure we are using all the resources of the city that we have instead of, you know, thinking or purchasing things that we may have locally.
Good question.
President White, sorry. I can answer that a little bit. I'd like to go back to Councilman Laborn's statement for, I just want to make sure that I was trying to correlate this directly to the ARP funding. But I want to assure this group that I am coordinating with other departments on all these projects, and we are trying to look at the long term. But again, for this particular piece, I was looking at the short vision to keep this condensed. But yes, we are certainly prepared to move forward with a longer-term solution. And look, and as Councilman Johnson indicated, I, yes, we certainly are going to use all our staff resources. That's why we were just going to do the assessment at this particular point. What we have right now is is a is a simple case where sediment has is probably taken and choked off the wetland plants. And that's right now, it's the first, the worst stage. I hope that answers your question, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. If we could proceed next. Renee, who's after Mr. Cobb?
All right, so Tom, are you?
All right, so Tom, are you unsharing your screen?
I'm gonna do it right now, ma'am, just a moment.
We've got Charles Bloom coming up next with the planning and development.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let me.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Bloom, we'll turn it over to you.
Territorial Committee, Charles Bloom, planning and development director, for the record. I did not put together a fancy PowerPoint like Tom, so I'll let it stay on the screen with what Renee has provided there. But to dovetail on the last conversation we did have, one of our requests is the pump house mothball. Essentially, what we're looking at is $450,000 that we used to mothball the pump house. We're making this request to support the Historic Preservation Board's goals, which is preserve that pump house and also to support the city's May of 2021 resolution that was to support and proceed with steps necessary to protect and rehabilitate the historic structure that is there at the pump house. Again, this entire project dovetails on the engineering department's project as well with finalizing that. And it does also dive into the Greenway because it helps support the Greenway and makes this a potential attraction on the Greenway system. Regarding this, this is an estimate that was put together based on the 2017 and TDSI report that had an estimated cost of mothballing to be around two. It was around $361,000, and we did increase it to 450,000 to account for increase in labor costs, material and other costs that are there, because presently we do understand that this four-year-old estimate is likely out of isn't sufficient. This supports the infrastructure goals of the ARPA funds. And again, this is just an item that would be put together to stabilize that National Register property and really help increase quality of life and reinvigorate the area. That is one of our items. The second one is the permit to land use software. An update to our permanent landing software would be greatly beneficial to the city of Cheyenne. With COVID-19, we have mostly moved all of our permits to a completely online basis using the open forums technology. This essentially is creating an area in a way that we can receive these items. However, it doesn't give us the ability to improve the way we review our items and how we make them visible to the clients, the customers, and other agencies reviewing these different development applications. We do have some challenges today with how we take payments. People pay, how we track our payments, and how we track our finances. I'm sort of looking at the software that would help aid in that and facilitate that. Ultimately, this is expected to to be an independent module or a module that would be related to an overall software system that would be incorporated by the entire community or by the whole city. As I understand, last week, Compliance made a presentation, and with Compliance, they talked about a permit system. We would essentially be utilizing this money to enhance that system. Again, that dollar amount, that's made to be about $150,000 for implementation. There would be annual costs that would be anticipated, and that would be budgeted as necessary in the budget. But with upcoming fee schedules, we will try to make sure a lot of those fees of still facilitate development are indeed funded by the development community. And our final item is something that is very long overdue. It's an update to our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This master plan was last updated in 2006 with the initial adoption of Plan Cheyenne. That master plan was based off of year 2000 census data. As you're aware, we just finalized a year 2020 census, so there's no better time than now to to essentially reevaluate our park areas, reevaluate our populations, and reevaluate the needs of the community. Since 2006, the city has expanded a lot. We have a lot of new neighborhoods. We have a lot of new parks facilities, and we have a lot of new acreage. So it is important to plan accordingly and make sure we are investing our future parks dollars in the right areas. As we're all aware, during the COVID pandemic, a lot of people turned to recreation for physical care, for mental well-being, and just to be outside. So this $275,000 we're requesting. We do believe it can be supported of the tourism element, and it can be a great benefit for the community. And regarding the rest of the comprehensive plan, all other elements have been recently updated. Most recently was the transportation element that was updated in 2020. And in 2016, we did the community character. And the land use plan map was also updated in 2020. So I'm open for any questions you that you all may have on these items.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. I did not know that the last time that master plan had been updated was 15 years ago. Thank you for that. Are there questions from council or Mr. Bloom? Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, President White. I just wanted to say I, and this is just a general overall comment, but I really appreciate that all of the directors that have presented so far are really looking at capacity building and making sure that we're going to have the tools we need in order to make the decisions we will be asked to make over the next 10 to 15 year period. So thank you for having an eye towards capacity building and moving us forward even beyond this money.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge. Other questions from council? I'm hearing none. Renee, I believe BOPU is next.
That is correct, and I don't know, Ashley, do you have a screen?
I'm using mine. Hi.
Um, no, we're just gonna go ahead, like Mr. Bloom and you.
Okay, just let me know, because I think not you're only on one screen. Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, this is Brad Brooks. Good afternoon, everybody. President White, council members. We're gonna kind of tag team a little bit. I have Ashley here in the office with me, and then Frank is calling in, but he's gonna share on a couple of the items too. So we're gonna kind of tag team. So Ashley's gonna start us out on the the first couple, and then we'll just switch as appropriate. So Ashley, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and council members. We have listed for you 11 priorities. And what we are gonna do is just go ahead and kind of give you a a brief background on each of them in chronological order. So with that, the first item that we have on our list is the phone system, which we have a cost of $125,000. We're requesting funding for the complete replacement of the current phone system in which BOPU will release a request for bid. Our cost came from a proposal of a cost estimate that we used from our budget cycle, which was about a year ago. During the pandemic, the BOPU was met with several difficulties and challenges while attempting to to maintain the necessary high level of customer service. The BOPU customer service representatives were unable to work remotely as suggested by the CDC and various local health orders. BOPU is in need of a system that can further support potential remote work needs for various departments, including the dispatch lines and customer service. The following project is for laptops, 18 of them, and to provide conference room equipment, excuse me, for all of our air or all of our conference rooms here at the board, and we're asking for about $40,000. You have a limited number of laptop computers available to be checked out by employees. These laptops are generally used for temporary work assignments outside of the office, such as training, conference presentations, or external meetings. During the pandemic, BOPU was restricted on allowing employees to work remotely due to having only four laptops that were deployable for remote for remote use. BOPU has made attempts to accommodate with desktop computers requiring setup by the employee. However, not all employees are capable of setting up this type of system at their home. By adding additional laptops, the BOPU will be able to accommodate additional employees who may need to work remotely, as well allow for overall better customer service, work efficiencies, and a reduction in lost time. During the pandemic, BOPUs, BOPU utilized many meeting platforms, including Zoom, free conference calls, standard telephone conference equipment, and Microsoft Teams. These options have been helpful, but have not proven to be adequate or reliable for continuous virtual meetings moving forward. The proposed system will allow for both voice and video conference equipment, and will enable the board to equip all board meeting, excuse me, all meeting rooms with quality voice video conferencing equipment to support the virtual meeting platform and further support remote work environments as needed. The next item on our list is Fiber to Sherard Water Treatment Plant, and Brad is gonna go ahead and cover that.
Yes, these next two projects are projects that we have had in the works for a little while. Last year, we actually converted our Dry Creek and Crow Creek plants over to fiber. So they are all connected. We just used to have hardline telephone lines and some actually microwave connections of those, and they were very, very unreliable. So we got that one done last year out to Dry Creek for about 400 some thousand. It was just a lot longer run. The project to the Sherard Water Treatment Plant, as well as our fiber up to the Rob Roy reservoir, we figured we can do each of those at about $75,000. The one to Sherard will actually replace, right now, we have a microwave connection that actually goes from the city building out to Sherard. That is our connection, and we want to improve that. We have a lot of reliability issues. And Sherard being our main control center, meaning that's where a lot of our after hours, if there's anything that happens in the plant, plants or in our facilities alarms, comes through the Sherard plant. We want to make sure that that facility is robust, and we're not having any type of communication type issues. So that would be for the Sherard project. For the one for Rob Roy, actually, last year, we actually lost our controls to the Rob Roy reservoir due to the Mullen fire. And so this improvement would be improvement where we actually put in a fiber optic optic line compared to the current, right now, it's a hardwired copper line. They have restored that temporarily. But we would like to upgrade that to a fiber line so that's not susceptible as the old copper line was. Just so everybody knows, the Rob Roy plant is where we pull a lot of our trans basin water from. That's basically all of it. And so when we do not have communications with those facilities through our SCADA system, which controls a lot of our valves and controls to bring water over, we physically have to send people up there to do those basic changes. So that is why we would like to get that on fiber optic. So those are those two projects. Is there a question? The next.
Wait, I think there is a question, Brad. Do you want to take a question now, or would you rather get through the chart?
Whatever you'd like, we are fine.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, I see your hands raised. Go ahead.
Jeff, I'll let Brad finish his speech, and then I'll ask it at the end.
I'm done with, I've got a few more, but we can, we can do the questions at the end. I'm gonna hand it over to Frank right now. He's gonna take the next couple.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
You bet.
Hey, thank you. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay. The next three projects I'm gonna talk about, first one being our lead pipe replacement project. Currently, there are still lead services within our distribution system, and EPA is in the process of developing and creating new rules that will require us to start increase our monitoring for lead in the drinking water and start with the replacement of lead lead services. These funds would allow us to move forward now with replacing the known lead services we have and identify others within our system. Item ranked number six. This would be to retrofit the Sherard Water Treatment Plant with a onsite hydro or sodium hypochlorite system to allow us to disinfect the drinking water that's supplied to the city of Cheyenne. Currently, we are using bulk chlorine gas for doing our disinfection, but during this COVID crisis, we've run into numerous supply issues. This would allow us to become very self-sufficient and not dependent on truck drivers or the supply chain. All we need is electricity, water, and salt if we can generate our own chlorine to meet our needs. The next item, standby aeration power at Dry Creek. Currently, the Dry Creek wastewater reclamation facility does not have backup power on our blowers. So in the event of a power outage, we cannot supply the air, the oxygen needed for the microbes to properly digest and treat the wastewater reforced discharge to Dry Creek. So this would allow us to put in backup power where we are not running into issues during power outages on meeting our treatment requirements. I believe the next one is yours, Brad.
Yes, the next one is what we call our Flock Basin, which is rated at number eight. It's for 650,000. This is again up at our Sherard Water Treatment Plant. The flock basins are basically the first treatment process as water enters the plant. And that's where we begin to basically take any type of particles or sediment debris out of the water. It's a settling process. If any of you have been up there, you've seen that. It's kind of hard to believe, but the Sherard project is already 20 years old in 2022. The plant went online in in 2002. So of course, we monitor that, and there's a lot of rehab work that's needed and upgrade on those facilities. And so we are starting that. We actually have three flock basins. There's actually three trains that we can bring water in through the plant. We have already done the first two flock basins have been rehabbed, and this would be our third. We were actually gonna do this work last year, but due to COVID and some of the revenue shortfalls that we experienced, we postponed that till this year, but it is a vital part of the plant in order to reduce any sediment that comes in in our surface water at the water treatment plant. The next one, we're gonna go back to Frank.
You're muted.
Sorry, too many buttons. I apologize. The first project or the next project we'll talk about is the Crystal Granite Bypass. This should sound familiar to the city council. We did just go through getting approval for some resolutions. But I'll be brief. This project would allow us to bypass Crystal Reservoir with our Stage Two water and and still be able to deliver that water to Sherard. Currently, all of the surface water that goes to the Sherard Water Treatment Plant has to go through the Crystal Outlet Works, which is over 100 years old. So the construction of this bypass pipeline would allow us to maintenance to the outlet works or be prepared for emergency and still be able to supply water to the city of Cheyenne. Currently, we are applying for a drinking water SRF loan in the amount of 1.3 million. This would allow us to forego that loan and move forward with the project. I believe the next two are Ashley's.
To wrap up for the Board of Public Utilities, we have two more items. One of them is the loss of revenue, which was estimated at $1,470,000. Although the board was justified in imposing recommended rate increases to both the water and sewer side, we did not do so. Last bid's clear just due to the pandemic. Based on the actual revenue earned, we estimate that we lost $1,470,000. Three or 737,900 was on the water side, which would have been a 3% increase to our revenues and 732,100 on the sewer side because the rate increases that were recommended for the year was 5%. The last item that we do have is a landscape water management and planning training. This is for about $10,000. To further improve the community's knowledge about water conservation, we're requesting funding for an educational and informational training made available to the community stakeholders and customers of the board. The Landscape Irrigation Technician Course would be offered to customers and community members and would teach the basics of hydraulics and irrigation system installation and maintenance. This full day learning session would also provide an overview of irrigation system components and how they operate. Participants would learn about replacing and repairing PVC pipes, installing nozzles, adjusting heads, setting, repairing electrical valve and field and controller wiring techniques. And this is one of the big areas that we see in the summertime that create a lot of leaks and is a lot of waste of water. So just something that could be beneficial to our community. Be glad to answer any questions you guys may have, and I will turn it back over to
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Frank, and thank you, Brad. Mr. Johnson, your hand was up first. We'll go to you and then we'll go to Mr. Laborn.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that I waited until Ashley was done with her part. I guess because this is more of a one time art funding type of thing. My question kind of like with the enterprise fund with sanitation rolls over to this one because we actually have the potential to do rate increases every year instead of because we're like, I think there was like twenty five million dollars in asks and only around six and a half million dollars in actual monies that could be done. Would you guys be opposed to actually bringing forth a rate increase in May of next year that would actually cover some of your programming instead of using the one time art funds?
Through you, President White, to Mr. Johnson. So you're saying, Richard, bringing a a rate increase, what month did you mention? May?
Sorry, typically, yeah, you guys do your presentation in May because of the budget usually is approved in June. And so I know that you guys actually have different avenues or revenue streams where you can do rate increases. Because we actually know through these work sessions of what we're actually being allocated from all departments. And so I look for avenues of agencies like yourself and sanitation that have the ability to actually increase fees yearly. That if we knew that we had an avenue to actually raise funding through those sources instead of using our one time A R P funding, I guess that's where I would kind of hesitate with you guys compared to other departments that don't have the ability to raise revenue. That is, you know, would you be opposed to like when you bring your presentation before council next fiscal year? That you're saying the reason we did is because the A R P funding, you know, went to other departments that don't have the ability to raise revenue where we do. So we're asking for, you know, like she said a few minutes ago in regards to a five percent increase, if you were to present your increase of why you were doing it, basically going back to this presentation today so that we could actually use our A R P monies for agencies that can't fund for themselves where you guys have, you know, the ability to actually raise rates to take care of some of your projects.
So the again, through you, President White, to Mr. Johnson, the answer would be yes. I mean, we we will anticipate having a rate increase this next year. We're doing that as part of our rate study that we've we've completed. So I guess in answering your question, I don't think we'd be opposed to that.
Thank you. That's all I had, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Laborn, your hand was up next. Mr. Laborn, you're muted, sir.
No longer. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, these are very worthwhile things, some of which will be able to utilize these funds as in the case of the Crystal Granite bypass and have that ability to look at other programs that I think are very, very important. But the landscape water management and planning training for ten thousand dollars is really a good thing, obviously, but it's not enough of a good thing. That and it's not just the Board of Public Utilities, it is our development. And I'm sure we've all seen, and I know it catches my attention when we see site plans that are approved and begun and then a couple of years down the road, they're dead. And that is something that obviously isn't just the Board of Public Utilities. That's that's a more of a development process. It's more of a arborist process. But we really need to take a look at this as climate change shifts our community's ability to grow things and yet we have a outdated, in my opinion, and poorly enforced process of site plan rehabilitation and review. And and that really is basically comes down to water and how that water is delivered. So I again think that that is a good idea to have that conference at the college. But this is more of a project that really stretches across a number of our agencies and is very important. I'm sure we're all aware of it to a degree, but I would remind other council members, when you're out and about and check some of this out, you'll see that the trees are dying, the vegetation isn't there. And then a couple of years down the road, it's back to a weed patch. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborn. Dr. Aldrich, you were next.
Thank you, President White. Through you to Ashley or to Brad, I'm wondering about this loss revenue. I know that I've heard presentations and when we toured the facilities that you have, that there was discussion about the loss of revenue based on Holly Refinery lowering their demand for water because they've been under construction and their new processes with the renewable fuels don't take as much water. And I'm just wondering if this loss of revenue that is on here includes the loss of revenue due to the lack of water sales to Holly Frontier, if that was taken into account? Or if you looked at your twenty twenty, I'm guessing your fiscal year twenty twenty and use those numbers to calculate what your loss of revenue was that included that Holly Frontier water?
Ashley will answer that.
President White, through you to Dr. Aldrich. Dr. Aldrich, we went ahead and calculated the actual lockup revenue by not doing rate increases on actual revenue received following our audit. So it is not based on the estimated amount of revenue we anticipated due to Holly Frontier. This is based on actual revenue received from fiscal year or from the prior fiscal year.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great question.
Yes, it was. Thank you, Dr. Aldrich. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, I just want to thank folks from B O P U from engineering and planning. And thank you again, Renee, for helping coordinate all this. I know this is extremely complex, but it's much appreciated and very much needed. And we will be back again at this next next Friday. Again, for those who didn't get the announcement at the beginning, the work session next Friday will be the third session for the American Rescue Plan Funds. It was originally scheduled for December tenth, but will instead take place next week. So if there is no other business, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Go Pokes.